Ready? Ready? All right. Good morning. Today is October 19th, 2021, and this is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Due to issues arising from COVID-19, the board is using WebEx teleconferencing format for today's meeting and may be participating via the World Wide Web. If you'd like to make a public comment through the teleconferencing format today, please make sure that you're identified by name in the WebEx system. For those interested in commenting during unscheduled appearances at 9:00 a.m., which is a little late, please use the raise your hand feature and wait to be recognized and you'll be allowed up to two minutes for public comment. Members in the audience who have filled out speaker cards will be taken in the order that they were received by the clerk, and online speakers will be taken in the order they appear in the WebEx program, showing that their hand is up. If you wish to speak today and are having issues with the raise your hand feature in the WebEx system, please physically raise your hand so that we may see you and then wait to be recognized. Each voice, I did that on purpose, it's like, each vote today will be a verbal or voice vote so that members of the public can hear how each board member has voted. After we have had a motion and a second regarding each item we are taking up today, there will be a roll call vote by district. Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Joan Eves.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Raboon.
Here.
Craig Peterson.
Here.
Richard Fagundes.
Okay, we have five present. We'll now move to the invocation, and we have Pastor Mark Kurtz from Adventist Health System. Welcome.
Before I pray, I just want to say thank you again to our board for allowing the ministers to come and I guess others to pray. And I love, love, love to see our nation's motto here. I look at it every time I come in. So thank you for that, for the kind assistance of the clerk. Would you pray with me? Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this nation. We thank you especially for the privilege we have of having representative government. Help us not ever take that for granted. And I pray for those of us as citizens that we would understand our responsibilities to, not simply to be aware of what's going on, but Lord, to feel some sense of responsibility and accountability for our representative government. We pray today for health and safety of certainly our board and all of our county employees. Lord, thank you for those from law enforcement that could be here today. And Lord, we're always grateful for their labors that at many times go unnoticed and pray that they would feel loved and appreciated. For our board today, Lord, we continue to ask that you would grant them wisdom, that you would grant them integrity in the decisions that they make. And I pray that they would always be aware of their responsibility, not only to the citizens, but to know that as one day, we must all stand before you and give an account of our lives, both the internal life and the external life. May your mercy be upon each person that's here today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor. You would join me in the flag salute? Ready salute? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands by my nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, this time we'll move to item two, which is unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly address the board at this time on any item on the agenda or other items of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Two minutes are allowed for each item.
Carmen Diaz.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Carmen Diaz and I live off of 10th and Lawrence Street here in Hanford. I'm here representing in home support services. I'm here to request and ask the board of directors for Kings County to consider doing a raise for IHSS workers. We have not received a raise and we've been in negotiations for over three years. Other counties have given raises and they've gotten more than two raises. Fresno has done two negotiations with raises for in-home support services. The other thing I wanted to ask is, I know that the stimulus is, there was a stimulus given to counties regarding to be able to give care providers, and I know that I have not heard of any stimulus payments for Kings County caregivers. And I also wanted to ask the representatives here, when or how will that money or how was that money distributed? Because we did not receive those funds. So I am requesting that we, you guys consider it, because I feel that, as I mentioned before in my other presentation, that we are in the front lines with our loved ones or other family members who may need it in the home. And so I do ask that you guys consider this and put it in your agenda so that we can come to the table and think and look into negotiations for that sooner than later. And I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Then Romelia Solis. Yeah.
I'm going to translate for her. It says, good morning. My name is Romelia Solis. And I work for the in-home support services. She's saying that Tulare County and Fresno County, they're, wages are going up and we're still the same and she still wants us to go up as well. That'll be all. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then Veridiana Perez.
Good morning. My name is Veridiana Perez. I lived in Hanford my whole life. I've seen how much workers from the in-home support services work. They take their time out of their day to help these people out. It's more than a job. We can, we don't see them as clients. We see them as family members. And as family members, we do anything for us to help them out. Majority of them are disabled, those family members who don't take the time to go visit them. So we are there to help them out, even if we're not getting paid and we go over our time. But we're still there to help out because why? We are a community and that's what we should be doing, helping each other out no matter what. And I'm just asking that we can get a raise. So not only for us, but for us to continue to help them who need them. Because at some point, we're going to be, we're going to be in that age where we need some help. So why not start now helping us for people in the future can say, hey, we got this because of them. Now let us help them. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Keith Fagundes, District Attorney Fagundes is on line.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Wanted to give you a weekly update on the District Attorney's office. We have more than a thousand hearings going forward in court this week. We also have a jury trial for attempted murder, which we were able to begin. And last week, we concluded three to four trials, which is reducing the number of cases that we have stacking up due to the COVID last year. I also want to bring the board's attention to a correspondence that I sent to your, to the county administrative officer and to each of your emails that I would hope you would have in hand before considering any closed session items that relate to the topic at hand. So with that, if you have any questions, otherwise the DA's office is functioning well and we're reducing all of our, we don't have a backlog in case filings nor complaints waiting to go to court, which is an astonishing achievement, as I don't think any DA's office in the state can say that. So with that, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then Esmeralda Chavez.
Good morning, Chairman and Board members. My name is Esmeralda Chavez. I am a deputy probation officer who has been employed with the County of Kings for the past 15 years and serving as a president of the Kings County Probation Officer Association. I have come before you to address the current and critical situation the probation department is facing. First and foremost, we are law enforcement officers serving as officers of the courts and we understand we are not first responders. However, we play a critical role within law enforcement field that cannot be completed or accomplished by any other law enforcement agency in the county. Based on the education requirements to hire DPOs, all of us have college degrees and some carry master's degrees. The probation department consists of multiple units such as investigations unit and courts for adults and juveniles, adult field, juvenile field, domestic violence unit, EMS unit, PRCS, day reporting center, pre-trial services and others. With the realignment of AB109, it has created a unique situation where DPOs now supervise inmates being released from prison. These inmates have been convicted of serious or violent offenses and are more sophisticated individuals with complex criminal backgrounds, placing POs in more potentially and more dangerous environments and situations. Despite this, your officers have been performing their duties exceptionally, even with the shortage in staff. The county, excuse me, they continue to perform multiple duties along with their current assignment to complete their daily tasks. Yet your probation officers have not received equal compensation for their efforts. The probation officers have been, have not seen a raise since 2017, which was only 1% despite the improving economy and the increase in minimum wage. According to the state and county address, last year, the probation officers have been consistently the last to receive increases. This has caused several issues. The probation department has several open vacancies, which are becoming very difficult to fill without competitive wages to compete with other agencies. This has also caused that some of the most experienced officers to look for employment elsewhere. Between 2017 and present, we have had 30 officers leave the probation department, 14 of which have had five years or more experience. Officers that have left were vested with CalPERS, which will cause the county's unfunded liability to increase. Gentlemen, your probation department is becoming a training department. You hire, you equip, you train, and you provide them with experience needed to perform many duties and leave to other departments. In addition, we have officers in some units who are carrying two or more casos. They have, this has several effects on these officers for the, first, they get discouraged because the requirements of their duties are the same and they get burned out and the stress that is placed on them.
Ms. Chavez, I've given you an additional minute, so if you could.
It's coming. Close it up right now.
Sure.
This in turn can lead to many problems, making poor decisions and physically and mental health issues. The department, the deputy probation officers are dedicated and motivate individuals. They're here to serve the County of Kings. What the, the Kings County Probation Officer Association is asking you to, for fair treatment, validation and compensation for the job that you have tasked us to do. What, with that being said, please consider the proposals where we cannot afford to lose any more valuable officers in our department. Thank you for your time and consideration.
And then Kelly Vernon.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kelly Vernon, Chief Probation Officer. I would like to speak in support of the Probation Officers Association. You will be taking up that matter in closed session this morning. These officers are well-trained. They're highly dedicated. They've worked every day during the pandemic. We assumed an additional 100 PRCS inmates in a matter of six weeks' time. We were able to care for those and maintain public safety. I would have the board draw their attention to the fact that it costs us roughly $31,000 to fully onboard a deputy probation officer. This calendar year alone, we've had five officers leave the department. We have had 14 juvenile correctional officers leave the department. They run approximately $18,000 to fully onboard. With the absences of JCOs, not only are your deputy probation officers performing their duties as mandated, they are covering shifts in juvenile hall to ensure the safety of the youth that are entrusted to our care. I would ask your board to give them due consideration with their request for this contract. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then our CIO Edward Hill would like to speak.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ed Hill, County Administrative Officer. Pursuant to government code section 54954 dot two subsection B, the board may take action on items of business not appearing on the postage when there is a determination by two-thirds of a vote of the members of the legislative body present at the meeting, four-fifths for a five-member board, that there is a need to take immediate action and that the need for action came to the attention of the local agency subsequent to the agenda being posted. The board published its agenda for today's meeting on October 15th, 2021. Yesterday, October 18th, 2021, the county received a notice of violation from OSHA that must be responded to within five days. Based on the existing facts and circumstances and on the advice of legal counsel, there is significant exposure to litigation against the county and an immediate need to discuss the matter in closed session to determine the appropriate action. Based on the facts as presented and the advice of counsel, I asked the board to permit the matter to be discussed in closed session today pursuant to government code section 54956 dot nine subsection D2 and government code section 54954 dot two subsection B by determining that, one, there is a need to take immediate, action immediately, and, two, the need for action came to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda for today's meeting.
Okay, very good. So with that, I think we need a vote of the board to do that. Madam Counsel.
Yes, that's correct. If there is a motion and a vote of the board, then that will give us authority that we need to meet in closed session.
Very good. Thank you. To do so. You have seconds. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joan Eves.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Raboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Okay, we have five in favor. Motion carries. Is that it for?
That is it, yes.
We will move now to one item, item three, which is an employee recognition.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Sandy Huddleston, Administration. I'm honored to announce the winner for the employee of the quarter is Ms. Fran Lisiola. Fran began working for the county in 2002 in the child support division. And then she came to work for the risk department in 2013. It's just me and Fran in the risk department. And as many of you know, we put on mini hats and change our duties every day and we run 100 miles an hour. But when somebody calls and needs something or comes to the counter, Fran will put everything she's working on aside and go up and, or listen to them on the phone. She listens, she genuinely cares and she doesn't just give them an answer to make them go away. She digs and digs, gets the right answer and makes sure they understand by the answer is what it is. Fran is one of the most sincere, genuinely nicest people that I know. She always has a smile for you no matter what she has going on. For years, it was just me in the risk department and luckily Fran came to my rescue. People don't accept change very well and for years they would call, get Fran, say, can I talk to Sandy? Well, after years and years, now I, when she's out of the office, I answer the phone. They say, oh, is Fran there? I say, well, she's out of the office. Can I help you with something? Oh, no, that's okay. Fran was helping me and she knows what I need, so I'll wait for Fran. I quickly hang up the phone and I smile and I think, mission accomplished. Fran is so very valuable to all of us. I could not do my job without Fran. She keeps me updated, organized and on track. It's almost like before I even ask for something that I need, she's almost like she can read my mind now. And she says, it's already taken care of. She's definitely my lifesaver. If someone asked me what the definition of excellent customer service would be, I would answer in one word, Fran. I cannot thank you enough, Fran, for all that you do, not only for me, but for all of the employees of Kings County. We are so very lucky to have you and we appreciate everything that you do for us. I don't know anyone that deserves this award more than you. So again, thank you and congratulations.
Speech? You can say a few words, Fran. Short speech. Thank you.
While she navigates that, I'd just like to add that being a past department head, it's always been a delight to work with Fran and she does always have the ability to put a positive light on a stressful situation. So it's nice to have that, that personality and that approach to these issues. Thank you, Fran.
He missed a smile, Fran. That famous smile.
They're trying to tell you something, Fran. Get back to work.
All right, we'll move now to item four, which is approval of the minutes. We start with item 4A, which is a report out of the closed session from the regularly scheduled meeting of October 12th, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your board took no reportable action at the last closed session.
Thank you. We'll now move to item B, which is approval of the minutes from the October 12th, 2021 regular meeting.
Next move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joan Eves.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Raboon.
Abstain.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Abstain.
Okay, we have three in favor. Is that right? Yeah, three in favor, two abstentions, or two abstentions. So motion carries. We'll go to item five now, which is a consent calendar. Board, you have that before you. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, can I comment real quick?
On the consent calendar?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Good morning. I just wanted to very quickly say on item E, administration number one, A, I want to thank Council Diane Freeman and Human Resource Director Henny for giving me a lot of their time last Tuesday and giving me some background on the issue that I had a concern of publicly last week. And so again, I want to thank him for that. I'm going to be supporting this today, but I also just wanted just to reiterate that, you know, I wish everyone would have got their money before, before we did, just from the basic leadership principle. But I understand that that would be happening very soon. And so, so I appreciate learning of that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Getting back to board. Motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joan Eves.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Raboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Hey, five in favor. Motion carries. We'll now move to item six, which is regular agenda items. We'll start with item 6A, which comes from the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a courtly report from the facilities at Kettleman Hills Hazardous Waste Facility and looking for Mr. Henry. I see he's live there and ready to provide his report. Go ahead, Mr. Henry. I believe you're still muted, sir.
Hear me?
Yep.
Yep. All right, great. Report period of covers from July 27th through October 18th. I just have a few items. I just have a few items this morning. August ninth, the creek fire in the Kings County Public Health Department. What happened was on, excuse me, August sixth, KHF requested the Kings County Department of Public Health Environmental Health Division, acting as the local enforcement agency, to rescind the emergency waiver of standards for the removal of the creek fire debris. A notice of termination and a JTD amendment were submitted to Kings County and the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board as required by the regulations. So most of this material did go to American Avenue landfill. We had some that came out to the Kettleman Hills facility. Basically, the morning runs went to American and the evening runs came over to Kettleman. August thirteenth, treated wood waste in the Department Toxic Substances Control. On August thirteenth, CWMI requested DTSC extend the term of the treated wood waste variance for landfill B seventeen. It's our MSW landfill for an additional six months. CWMI agreed to continue to abide by the conditions of the self implementing variance. Shortly thereafter, Assembly Bill three ninety-two was approved incorporating the alternative management standards for treated wood waste. So what there was, there was a sunset on treated wood waste, the disposal of treated wood waste. When that sunset occurred, DTSC had to put in emergency regs to allow that material to still come into landfills that were basically that had previously been approved and that had the liner systems in them. August nineteenth, Kings County Environmental Health Services at KHF, monthly unannounced inspections of landfill B seventeen, MSW, B eighteen hazardous waste, and B nineteen MSW. No violations and no issues were noted during that inspection. August twenty eighth, KHF first responders completed confined space rescue training. That is a need that we have at the facility for in our treatment unit. We have a confined space under the tanks that we're mixing the waste in, and we have to go down there at least once a month. September fourteenth, Kings County Environmental Health Services at KHF, again, the monthly unannounced inspection of landfills B seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. No violations, no issues were noted during that inspection. September twenty eighth and twenty ninth, fire system at the container storage area was activated. Fire system operates as a dry system to prevent water in the pipes from freezing. We had this occur, oh, twenty years or so ago, and we switched over from having water in the pipes to having them dry. The air, excuse me, the air compressor which charges, the system went down, and the system air pressure bled off charging the system. When I say charging, what I'm talking about is water went into the pipelines. Air compressor was repaired next day, and the system restored to a dry system. The water pumps were not affected. So had there been an actual fire, the water pumps would have went off, and our water supply would have gone and extinguished the fire. October fourth through the seventh, SES construction at landfill B seventeen, the MSW landfill. What they're working on as construction includes the installation of six horizontal gas wells on the present lift that we're operating on. Again, you fill the landfills with horizontal lifts. SES construction was welding H G P E pipes together. KHF was excavating the trenches and installing the pipes. These pipes are used to collect the, excuse me, collect the gas that's generated from the decomposition of the MSW. To date, three horizontal gas wells have been installed on this particular lift, and then there's another three to be put in. October eleventh, KHF experienced high winds of power outage and fire. High winds caused the facility to temporarily hold trucks. Winds were more than fifty miles an hour. Power outage and fire occurred, and three power poles fell over near our property line. Kings County Fire Department and Cal Fire responded to the fire. A big thank you for that and the help of the wind. It went away from our property and not onto it. The power went off about four thirty P M. that afternoon. October twelfth, KHF was running on generator power due to the power being out, and our hazardous waste treatment unit was down due to the lack of power. October thirteenth, same thing, but we got power back on about five P M. that evening. So with that event, I just want to say again, thank you to Kings County Fire Department, Cal Fire, for all they did to get that, get the fire put out. October fourteenth, Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board at KHF facility inspection, no violations, no areas concerned noticed. Future activities at the facility, part B permit renewal, submitted was in June of twenty one. Technical review is ongoing by DTSC at this time. Title V air permit renewal, submitted is due in February. We're hoping to get that in before the end of the year. Next is landfill B nineteen traffic study. This is due prior to restarting operation of the landfill. Operations to restart in August of twenty two. Therefore, the traffic study is due in February of twenty two. I talked about this in that we had the landfill B nineteen was operating as a bioreactor for some six years through up through twenty fourteen. We've done a couple delay of closures, trying to get as much benefit out of the water or the liquids that was put into that landfill under the bioreactor permit. We spent about three hundred thousand yards in that landfill that we're going to try to recover as much as we can. We'll start that again August of next year. Also, with B nineteen, the closure design, that's due two years prior to closure, so we'll have to have that turned in in November of twenty two. So the news is we have the part B permit that is ongoing for renewal, and then we're getting ready to open up B nineteen next year, reopen it up. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Questions from the board? All right.
I'll make a motion to accept report as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundis?
Yes.
Okay, we have five in favor. Motion carries. We'll now move to item six B, which comes from county council.
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you are well aware, every ten years after the U.S. Census data is released, the county is required to evaluate whether supervisory districts have approximately equal populations using the new census data. Because of the COVID nineteen pandemic, the Census Bureau was about six months behind schedule in releasing census data. As a result, the county has about half the amount of time to redistrict that it would otherwise have had. In addition, recent legislation requires the board to engage in an extensive public outreach process to solicit and receive public input. The deadline for adoption of a map is December fifteenth, twenty twenty one. The county has historically adopted its map, its boundaries by ordinance. Accordingly, the current proposed redistricting schedule provides for adoption of new supervisory district boundaries in the same manner, with the first reading of the ordinance on December seventh and a second reading on December fourteenth. However, if the board adopts a new, if the board adopts new boundaries by resolution, it can do so at the December seventh board meeting and public hearing and reserve the December fourteenth date for an additional hearing or discussion if it becomes necessary. Election Code two one five zero zero, as amended by newly enacted Senate Bill five four nine expressly allows counties to adopt supervisory districts by resolution or ordinance. By passing the ordinance that I bring before you today, the board will take the preliminary steps necessary to later allow passage of supervisory district boundaries by resolution. As this is the first reading of the ordinance, I amend my recommendation as it's currently stated in the agenda item. Rather than recommending that you adopt the ordinance today, I recommend that the board introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance, number seven hundred, approving amendments to the Kings County Code of Ordinances, repealing the descriptions of the boundaries of the five supervisory districts in Kings County, and providing that new boundaries will be adopted by resolution. And I also recommend that the board request the matter be brought back next week on October twenty sixth, twenty twenty one, for a second reading and adoption.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Line? Yes, sir. Go ahead. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I want to thank counsel for also spending time on this, but I think it's important on the public side. Could she just briefly note the the spirit of this bill and the positive intent of it?
I would be happy to do that.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, did I interrupt you supervisor?
No, I was just saying, thank you.
I would be happy to do that. In fact, this is intended to relieve pressure on the board. It actually extends the time available for debate by one week because we don't have those requirements for a first and second reading to adopt the district boundaries. I still propose that at our final hearing, which is scheduled to take place on December second, that we consider a resolution for an adopted map that day. But should it become necessary and should discussion require, we would have the option of being able to bring it back for consideration on the fourteenth of December and still pass and approve maps by the deadline of December fifteenth.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing that. I just want to say for the record that everything that counsel presented on the background of this was in the bill. I read the bill analysis last night. This bill had support on both sides of the aisle. I don't think I found one no vote on it. And again, the spirit and the intent of this is to allow even more time for additional public hearing if that, if it came down to opposition or the the request from the public to add comments on fun, on those final stages of the redistricting process. And so again, I believe this is something I'll be supporting today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Other questions from the board?
Motion to approve as presented and waived with the first reading or second reading? What are we doing? First reading?
If you'd wait for the first reading today, we are introducing the ordinance today, waiving first reading.
I'll make a motion to, as presented, with waiving of the first reading. Nev's a second.
Okay.
But I don't think she can read.
Yeah. All right, we have motion and second. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundis?
Yes.
Okay, we have five in favor. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Diane. We'll now move to item six C, which is from Public Health Department and Ms. Darcy Pickens. Welcome.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Darcy Pickens, Public Health. I would like to start my report by reminding everyone that the tools to help end this pandemic are in our hands. Vaccination, frequent hand washing, staying home when you're sick, staying hydrated, wearing a mask are all measures to help protect your own health and the health of those around you. As a reminder, our daily numbers remain available on our website. We also continue to have ongoing communication with the hospital on their resource requests and daily status. Some of the strain on the hospital system regionally appears to be lessening, so we are hopeful that that trend will continue here locally as well. As of October eighteenth, the local hospital had fifty-one patients in med surge and nine in the I C U. Of those admitted, forty-six are Kings County residents. Since July first, eighty-nine percent of those hospitalized have been unvaccinated, with eleven percent having been vaccinated. On October fifteenth, Central California Emergency Medical Services Agency, E M S A, discontinued their use of the assess and refer policy in Kings, Tulare, Fresno, and Madera Counties. You'll recall this policy directed paramedics and E M Ts to refer patients to urgent care or their primary provider if the patient exhibited no emergent conditions that would require immediate transport to the emergency room. It is reported that this policy successfully met the objectives of reducing the number of non-emergent patients in entering hospital emergency departments and also keeping the number of ambulance resources more available for emergency service requests. Our P P E status has not changed. We are still maintaining a sixty-day supply of P P E for our healthcare facilities. The mobile testing site schedule for this week is on our website, and testing demand continues to decline slightly. We had approximately two hundred, two thousand, excuse me, and nine tests last week. We highly encourage those with symptoms or known exposure to COVID nineteen to test. Testing is really the only way to distinguish between COVID and the cold and flu symptoms that are so common this time of year and give you the information that you need to help prevent further community transmission. And of course, staying home if you are sick can help keep us all a little healthier this year. We had three hundred and sixty-three new cases last week, again, a slight decrease from the prior week and our lowest case count of the past ten weeks, an early but encouraging sign. Our new case count since the start of the current surge is six thousand seven hundred and forty cases. Case counts across various age groups appear to be stable at the moment. Our Delta variant case count remained at three hundred and sixteen this past week, and there are currently one hundred thousand four hundred and ninety-five reported Delta, reported cases of the Delta variant in California. Last week, public health administered two hundred and eighty-seven vaccines, again, a slight dip from the previous week. We continue to have appointment and walk-in availability. So far, Kings County providers have administered one hundred and seventeen thousand four hundred and forty-four vaccines to county residents. We have eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-two partially vaccinated residents, fifty-three thousand five hundred and thirty-nine fully vaccinated residents. Our current breakthrough rate is at one point four percent of our vaccinated population, remaining at a level that indicates the vaccine is effective. Lots of vaccine news this week. The F D A, the F D A's, excuse me, Vaccine and Related Biological Products Advisory Committee has made preliminary recommendations for emergency use, use authorization of a booster dose from the Moderna and Janssen COVID nineteen vaccines. Next, the CDC's Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices is scheduled to review these findings this Wednesday and Thursday, October twentieth and twenty first. Actual F D A authorization is also expected later this week. Pending that authorization and CDC recommendation, the findings will go to the Western States Advisory Committee and ultimately the California Department of Public Health. That typically happens within twenty-four to seventy-two hours of these bodies issuing their own recommendations, and then we begin administering here locally. Part of the reason that we have to wait for that recommendation, even though it has F D A emergency use authorization at that point, is that our required statewide system, My Turn, does not make the switch until we have the recommendation at the regional and state level. The F D A is also reviewing data related to the mixing and matching of vaccine boosters, so that is allowing people to receive a different COVID nineteen vaccine as a booster from the vaccine that they originally received. So we'll keep you updated on that as it moves ahead. Finally, still pending is the F D A's full review and authorization for the Pfizer vaccine in children ages five to eleven. That's expected as early as next week. As we understand it now, we at the Health Department here in Kings will not receive the first of the pediatric Pfizer vaccinations before November first. That's the earliest that we would receive them here on the local level. Receipt on or around that date is an estimate pending emergency use authorization of the vaccine for that age group. We are required to put in orders now, so the Health Department is putting in those pediatric vaccine orders today, and will be continuing with that the rest of this week. To help avoid any confusion, I just want to clarify that the pediatric Pfizer vaccine is the same vaccine that's given to adults. It is simply in a lower dose. So to ensure the accuracy of the dosage given, the pediatric vaccine is provided in smaller vials with appropriate syringes. So when I say we're doing our pediatric ordering, that is not a different type of vaccine. It's simply in a different dose, a different vial, different syringes. Trends on cases and hospitalizations appear to be moving in the right direction for the time being. As we move into our second winter during this pandemic, the Health Department is focusing on maintaining access to COVID-related services throughout the county, while also ensuring our full scope of public health services continue to be made available and preparing for a possible winter surge. Vaccine access continues to expand to additional populations. Evidence of their effectiveness continues to mount. The flu vaccine is readily available, and we are working The flu vaccine is readily available and we are working to ensure the residents of Kings County have the information and tools they need to stay healthy and keep us all collectively moving in the right direction. This concludes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Supervisor Verboon?
So the booster shot is available for 65 and older for Pfizer recipients. When is it going to be available for the younger generation that are not as old as Craig?
So it is available to those 65 and older and those younger with what are considered high-risk health conditions. That's a pretty long list and those with a high risk of occupational exposure to COVID. So.
Self attests to that?
Yes, you can. Absolutely. So when you come to the Health Department for a booster, we go over what those health conditions are, what the typical occupations are, and you do exactly that, sign a self attestation that you are in one of those groups and we confirm that you received your Pfizer vaccine, your completed Pfizer series and you got your booster.
Okay, I'll look at, I don't think I'm, I might have low self-esteem, but it's not a qualification.
I don't think that's on the list.
And just go to MyTurn and use login and then do your thing on there or you show up and get your booster?
We do accept walk-in appointments. You can also make an appointment, or walk-ins. You can also make an appointment over MyTurn.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, question?
You go ahead.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director Silva, for the record. Appreciate the information. Just some of my notes to write. Did you say over 100,000 now vaccinated in Kings County administered?
Yes. So vaccine providers have administered, let me get you the exact number here, 117,444. Our fully vaccinated residents are 53,593. So that 117,000 number is each dose and it includes non-county residents. And then the 53,539 is just residents who are fully vaccinated.
Okay, thank you. That makes, that makes sense. I was wondering why they were showing our percentage so low. Where obviously 117,000 fully vaccinated would, would put us way above 50%. So, no, thank you for clearing that up. And did you also say just over 6,000 confirmed cases in the latest surge, so going back to July, 6,000 infected individuals in Kings County?
Yes, 6,740 was that number.
Okay. Hey, thank you. Appreciate the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, supervisor.
Thank you.
And Darcy, how far a gap do you need between seasonal flu and COVID vaccines?
Great question, Supervisor. So you can actually get them at the same time?
Yeah.
You can. You can get the COVID vaccines with most other common vaccines, including flu. So we administer those at the same time if that's what the patient requests.
And I think the other misleading part in some of those numbers are the Janssen shots are a single dosage versus some of the other vaccinations take a series of two. And so I think those numbers, you can't really wait to souls immunized because you have to do some extra special math steps.
Yes. So that's part of the reason, thank you Supervisor. So that's part of the reason that we provide that fully vaccinated number. So that includes those vaccinated with Janssen. The single dose, they're considered fully vaccinated two weeks after that.
And then do you have any additional information on the mix and match of the Johnson and Johnson shots receiving some kind of a booster as well?
We don't at this point. We know that the data is being reviewed, but that's really all I know at this point. So we're keeping a close eye on that.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Further questions? Right?
All your shots at one time. One on each of this arm, one on that arm, one on this cheek, one on that.
And you might glow at night, too.
Too much information.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go ahead, as we always do every week, also provide an update on the status of Kings County employees with the COVID response. At this time, since the latest outbreak occurred, we've had a total of 153 cases and we currently have approximately 50 individuals teleworking or quarantining.
Very good. Thank you. All right. We have zoomed through our regular agenda items. At this point, we'll now move to item seven, which is the Board Member Announcements and Reports. With that.
I'd like to apologize for not being here last week. I had a family emergency, had to leave town. But, you know, I apologize for missing that and I will also have, be able to, also will miss the November 2nd meeting as well. Yeah, thank you.
You were gone?
Yeah.
I thought there was an extra parking stall.
Yeah.
Supervisor Pickens, you're good. Supervisor announced.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, I had the pleasure of recognizing the National Friends of Library Week, which we approved in this morning's agenda and acknowledged the Hanford branch of the Friends Group that have done just an outstanding job for the last four decades, helping out with library services, both in children's and adults. They do a great job. And then they also had a book sale on, on Friday and Saturday. Buck for a book is not a bad deal. And just with the COVID and everything else, they had it inside and had a little bit limited area rather than being out on the lawn and having, because it was some great weather over the weekend. But I think everything continued to announce JV football and freshman football at Lemoore and fire the cannon off the varsity games. It's just fun to watch people jump when they don't expect it, you know? And I just hope the Lemoore PD doesn't return fire because I'm just shooting blanks. The Kings County Homeless Coalition met yesterday and received updates on the couple of projects that are going on. It was my class reunion weekend, so besides the, the football game and the ice cream socials and the dinners and the cleanup on Sunday, and I think my liver overload light might have went off once or twice.
1941, what, year?
Thank you very much. I was a, I was a child prodigy.
Oh, pretty.
I was very young. But it's amazing to go up there and see, yeah. I went to my, I think Tony Barber said this once. I went to my class reunion and seen a bunch of old people there. Yeah. And then for your dining pleasure, Wimpy's is now open in Lemoore. So if you want to partake in a Wimpy's burger, they have been open and they had a lot of people in line yesterday. So congratulations to them. It's been a long journey and they're opened up. And then the Lemoore High School band competed in the Visalia Band Review, a very highly regarded and took top honors. So congratulations to them. With that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good. Thank you. Supervisor Valley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two quick things. One, just did some more follow-up on the Kettleman City issue, the water issue. So again, I want to thank the board for getting that resolution passed and getting that sent up to DWR last week. There was Univis showing, came to the community last week based on those concerns and interviewed some residents and, and Justin Mendez and I were asked to interview in that as well. So we did that to help tell our side, use that opportunity to tell our side as well and why we're concerned with the issue in Kettleman, including just overall ag concerns on, on the water situation. So again, thank you all for that support on that issue out there. Secondly, this past Friday, Mr. Chair was brought to my attention and I wanted to bring it to the board's attention that the, as you know, the California Assembly District, Senate Districts, Congressional Districts are all being, going through the redistricting process through the California Citizens Commission. So they had their meeting going on this past Friday. You may already know. But there's two maps that affect Kings County on the Assembly District and I sent them to Mr. Hill. And so, Mr. Chair, one of the, both maps, one map now for the Assembly District takes the county of Kings and the district gets flipped, meaning right now we're on the northern end of the Assembly District and it goes down to Kern County. Now, one map takes Kings County. We're on the southern end and then the district extends all the way up to Fireball, Mendota, swings west to Kalanga. And so we'll have to get used to that. But the concern is the city of Corcoran on that map, Mr. Chair, gets split in half. And the west side of Corcoran would be in this new Assembly District that I just tried to explain. And it looks like the east side of Corcoran would go into the Assembly District that is, covers all of Visalia and Tulare. And so there's concerns here in Corcoran on that, on, on those two maps. I took the opportunity on Friday, I stayed on their Zoom meeting for four hours, waiting my turn to make a public comment. They moved public comment to yesterday at 2:00. So I got back on yesterday afternoon and I did speak as a representative for Corcoran, asking the commission to please consider keeping the entire county of Kings whole and in one Assembly District. And so that being said, Mr. Chair, I, I did go out of my way to let the commission know that I wasn't speaking on behalf of the county of Kings or the board supervisors. And with that, I'd like to ask for Mr. Hill to get those maps over to the board and to see if the board would authorize the chairman to send a letter and get it on their, on their comments, Mr. Chair, which, which could easily be done on their website today. There was a way to authorize you to do that today or to, or to bring something more formal next week that the board could look at and consider passing and have you sign and send. And obviously, Mr. Chair, there's, it's not good to have the county split into two Assembly Districts and especially the community of Corcoran. The lines on the draft maps are so vague. It looks like with the two prisons we have in Corcoran, one prison would be in one Assembly District and the second prison would be in another Assembly District, which makes no sense. And, and I would ask for the, the board's support, the county's support, that we keep the city of Corcoran whole and in the same, this new Assembly District that it looks like we're being drawn into. That's my report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, thank you, Supervisor Valley. And, Madam Counsel, do you have any direction for us on how we might draft that? Are we good with the consensus of the board?
You know what? If, if your board wants to direct me to bring a letter back, some sort of letter for consideration that can adopt next week, then I'm happy to do that. Your board, as individual members, could always go on and make comment, as Supervisor Valley has suggested today. But if it's going to be a board action, then it'll be agendized and I will take your direction if that's what you want me to do and put it on formally as, in the form of a letter for next week.
All right, thank you. And I don't know if the board wants to have a bit of discussion about this, but, you know, clearly it's distasteful to have, you know, the county bifurcated and create two separate districts. I think it's important to, to keep the county as a whole and, and, you know, at least my opinion. But is this something that the board has an interest in responding to? I'll tell you what, why don't we?
There's like three Assembly Members in Kern County, right?
I don't know.
And two in Fresno.
Yeah. Well, I think it's something that we need to, we could maybe request either more information next week or, or, you know, maybe draft a letter that kind of outlines Supervisor Valley's concerns and then have the discussion around that, that letter.
That, that would be appropriate and I'll take that as direction to, to go ahead and prepare something for the board's consideration. It includes a letter and then you can have a discussion about whether to adopt that letter as a board, as a board letter at that time. And perhaps I can work with Supervisor Valley to help articulate the specific issues he, he would like to see brought out and any other board members who have a specific opinion.
Hey, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. I will, I will say that city of Corcoran, they're, they're taking that same action with the letter. And in fairness to the Citizens Commission, from listening to their discussion on the maps on Friday and yesterday, there's probably at least 30 instances where those commissioners learned of communities, small rural communities that were split in half and they directed the drawers of the lines to go back and keep those communities whole, especially the attempts to do that in the Bay Area and along the coastlines. There was a lot of communities on the coastlines that were split in half or even cut out of their former districts and they would give those line drawers direction to go back. So they were very open to that. But I think the letter was supported the board and the chairman's signing will carry a lot more weight than, you know, my individual comments yesterday as well. So I appreciate you guys for hearing that concern. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. And with the letter, maybe a little dive into the actual map itself and, and then we can have some, you know, discussion around that as well. So. Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Valley.
Thank you, Chair.
Yep, my comments, keep it short. Had a leadership call with the National Association of Counties yesterday with respect to, I chair the Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee. You know, we've heard a lot about, a lot of discussion about the human infrastructure bill that's been bouncing around Congress and three and a half trillion dollars. And, and the question was how, how do they pay for it? And through some, some in-depth review, some of those ways that they pay for it are starting to come out. One of the concerning issues would be something called the STEP Act, also known as the Sensible Taxation and Equity Promotion Act. And basically what it does is it would impose a new tax on farmland and equipment that forces inheritors retroactively pay taxes on purchases made, you know, decades ago. And basically, it's, it's a reversal of the step up in basis. So at the worst possible time, when there's a death in the family, this would institute a tax on farms and ranches. The group that did the study, did a representative study and found that 90 of 94 farms would have a tax bill, rough tax bill of $1.4 million at, at the time of death. And as you all know, I know, moving ranches through families is, is a challenge. And, you know, there's not a lot of cash around to do that. It's, it's decades-old property that's been taxed already. They've paid the property taxes. They've paid the sales tax on the equipment. And now they're going to be asked decades later to pay further taxes on those parcels. And I think it would put, you know, farms and ranches around the nation at, in a real tough place. So I would, I would, you know, upon further review and I would work with county council maybe to draft a letter in opposition. I think this would have to go to the speaker. I said this is couched in her office. While it's not attached to the, the bill currently, they say that this is, you know, read the bill or, you know, we'll pass the bill and tell you about it later. And unfortunately, this is one that's going to hurt our community and branching communities, farming ranch communities in California and beyond. So with that, if I could get maybe possibly some consensus to consider a letter on that as well at our, our next meeting. I don't see any head nods.
Very appropriate.
Okay. Very good. That's all I have. So we'll now move to Board Correspondents, upcoming events.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for Board Correspondents. The Lemoore City, excuse me, Cemetery District is recommending that the Board of Supervisors appoint Steve Avila to the Lemoore Cemetery District Board of Trustees. For upcoming meetings and events, we saw the Links for Life Pink Passion Picnic at the Hanford Civic Auditorium on October 20th, 2021 at 10:30. Oktoberfest Beer Festival Benefit for Hanford Police Canine Foundation, October 23rd, 2021, from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. at Hanford Civic Park. United Cerebral Palsy Central California inaugural cornhole tournament is still scheduled at the Hanford Civic Auditorium on October 24th from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. The Halloween Spooktacular hosted by the Kings County Animal Services. The Halloween Spooktacular hosted by the Kings County Animal Services, October 29th from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at Bonneville Lane, Hanford. Excuse me, that's 10909 Bonneville Lane in Hanford. And Battle of the Badges Blood Drive, November 22nd in the parking lot of Human Services, starting at 9:00 a.m. For upcoming agenda items, Admin has appointees to the Kings County Independent Solid Waste Hearing Panel. County Council has two items, a resolution to continue the teleconference meeting under the provisions of AB 361 and an appointment of trustees to the Wilbur Reclamation District Number 825. FIRE has two items, the Corcoran State Prison Mutual Aid Agreement and the Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Policy for Federal Aid Projects. Health, of course, has the COVID update. HR has three items, MOU with Firefighters Associations, MOU with the Deputy, excuse me, Detention Deputies Association and an update on, excuse me, updated salary resolution. HSA has an agreement with evident change for safe measures and internet reporting system. And Public Work has five items, disadvantaged business enterprise policy for federal aid projects, surplus vehicle equipment declaration, purchase of a flat rack, a wheel loader and a tractor. And that concludes all the items.
Hey, Mr. Chair, one quick question. Hey, Mr. Hill, did you say continuance of teleworking options or tele-meeting options?
Tele-meeting options for, according to AB 361, that has to be renewed every 30 days.
Oh, I see, okay, thank you.
Other questions? Did you cover upcoming events as well?
I did.
Yep, okay, all right, go. All right, with that, we'll move to item eight, which is closed session. And we have numerous items on closed session today. First is a conference with real property negotiator, one case, Government Code Section 54956.8 and property 122 West Lacey Boulevard, California 93230. Second is a conference with labor negotiator, meet and confer, Government Code Section 54957.6 and it will take up Prosecutors Association, Blue Collar SEIU and the Probation Officers Association. The next is significant exposure to litigation, two cases, Government Code Section 54956.9 D2 E3. And then again, significant exposure to litigation, two cases, Government Code Section 54956.9 D1. And then as referenced at the, in public comment by the CAO, we have another item which is, comes to us under Government Code Section 54954.2. And it is in response to a letter from OSHA. So with that, we do have a meeting at 11 o'clock, California Public Finance Authority, regular meeting. And then we do also have a special meeting which will be held this afternoon at 1:30. It is County Council and.
Is that just one interview, Mr. Chairman?
I believe so, yes, correct. All right, and so with that, is there any other information that comes forward to the board this time? Seeing none, we'll adjourn to closed session, meeting adjourned.